Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the August 29th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is 7:05 PM. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of the meeting notice. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting set forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Mrs. Bizzell?
Here.
Mrs. Farrar?
Here.
Mrs. Presto?
Here.
Mrs. Freshy? Mrs. Freshy, time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cruz. Moving on to our agenda, we have a presentation this evening. We have Dr. Charlie Miller here to present our spring 2023 results.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Near the end of the summer. We're excited to get back with our students. The presentation is being uploaded now, as you can see. August 29th, quarter of the summer ago. Our Verona Public Mission Statement, who we are and what we want to do to empower students to cultivate their intellectual curiosity, social responsibility, a vision for all, an image of the future we seek to create, to promote the ability of transfer learning, new experiences that we may develop, confident and responsible individuals who aspire to achieve their full potential, enabling each student to flourish as a responsible citizen in the global community. So last spring, in the March, it's normally the second week, this is our second year, taking the NJGPA. It replaces the prior Park 11 and before that, what was called the HESPA. And before that, when I was a kid in high school in ADD, it was HSDT. Freshman were given that in ADD. And that was, the test is much different now, but it has that much history. It's a little background on the test. So it's a statute that's required. We still have an 11th grade graduation requirement, according to the state. That is, again, argued with the state every year whether or not we should still keep this. So it's a lively discussion. So they brought back what's called the NJGPA, the Graduation Proficiency Assessment. It measures language arts and it measures math. Graduation readiness is reported separately for each content component, and we'll go over that. The ELA component is aligned to grade 10 standards. So the theory is when students complete grade nine and 10, then they'll take an 11th grade test in the spring. And then mathematics is given to students that are juniors that complete Algebra I and geometry. And that generally is all of our students, with a couple of exceptions. Continuing with information, on May 3rd, 2023, they changed the cut score. The range of the test is from 650 to 850. 750 used to be the cut. They changed it to 725. So they lowered about 25 points. So that, of course, brought about a lot of conversation amongst the state. Some thought, well, that's fine. I think they saw, because there were students coming out of COVID and there were still some effects from that. And there are others that are like, well, you know, why don't you even have a graduation test? And so they still, it's in the assembly to not exist. But there are people that are very vocal that want to keep it. So we will say... Dot, dot, dot. Students who take but do not meet the minimum required scoreage component of the assessment will have the opportunity to receive official supports and they take the following steps. Retake the ELA and/or math components of the NJGPA in the following summer or fall and need a designated cut score from the menu of substitute competency tests, such as like the PSAT, the SAT, the ACT. So when parents last year who had juniors asked us, does my son or daughter or my child have to take this? We said yes. And as long as you take it, then there are other substitute tests that you can take if you don't meet the cut score. Especially taking this, PSAT we offer every year since freshman year. Then maybe a substitute student take ACT, and they take SAT several times. They used to be able to take the ACT place, although I heard that's getting phased out. I was talking to Mrs. Ackerman, our Director of Council, and that was always a nice thing. And even they used to give the ASVAB.
The ASVAB, I guess.
Yeah, but that was still a good one. I mean, but I took that as a kid too, so. And then our last option is, we have a couple of teachers who get like a stipend or a sixth period, if you will. Generally has been one math teacher, one language arts teacher. If we've had any students that need a little more of that remediation, they will go through PIGOT standards, develop a portfolio, and then we submit it to the state. And then eventually they let us know that the student is proficient in that area. We normally work on the students' areas of deficiency. So we did have, I'll go through the results and I'll tell you what we're doing about all of this. So this is what it looks like if you have a child who is a junior who took the test. It looks like it has an ELA, it has math. They were mailed out from the high school at the end of July. And it has an ELA side and it has a mathematics side. If you reach where I circled the score of 725 or higher, that means you're graduation ready. So the test is either one or a two, where the NJSLA is a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. So it's less, I don't know what the word, it's just more, it's like binary, 0 or 1. In this case, it's 1 or 2. And this is what the reading and writing components look like for ELA. So under reading, it's literary text. So that's like fiction. Informational text, which is nonfiction and vocabulary. And then the writing portion is written expression and knowledge of language and conventions. And then they have a nice little, being a math major and loving stats and comp sign, they have a nice little picture on the right that sometimes is more descriptive. And then same thing with math. They break math. I find it a little humorous that they call it major content. I mean, in math, there are four major branches. They should branch out to the four branches now. They should assess on geometry. They should assess on the idea of algebra. Still there? The batteries?
Yeah.
Thanks much. All right, we're back. All right, so it has major content, and then it has expressing, mathematical reasoning, additional supporting content, and modeling application. And one thing I failed to mention, it's either a check mark or if I go back to the English, not yet as a quotation point, the sideways arrows are at or near, and the check means it's above. So I think it's helpful to some degree to a parent because it gives you an idea. The frustrating part with these assessments is that we cannot look at the questions.
The only frustrating part is the kids don't.
Yeah, and they also, just from the instructional perspective, it's, we would love to get feedback, like AP gives us all the organized questions back. They don't share these. Laura Hillman, who I speak with at this with the state every year, oh, well, they're our sample questions. But like, we should, as educators, be able to see what they're asked, because then our teachers can make adjustments in instruction. This is the 19th year I've been saying this.
And it doesn't count, like the kids think it doesn't count.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, and it's, you know, I think we have a lot of our kids try, and there's others that are, you know, 725 helps. So that's the math. So here, and can I move this? Yeah, thank you. So if you look at the first row, the first two bar graphs, and then the third set, it's Verona is circled in maroon, and then the state is circled in blue, and the orange, yellow are the students who are not deemed graduation ready. This is last year. So about 3/5 of our students, 58%, last year were deemed not. And 41% were graduation ready. And if you look at the state, it was 60% and 30...
39.
Yeah, that needs to be a bigger stream. Okay, so then we go to, now that cut score was a 750. All right, when you make a 725, look what happens to Verona green. It goes from 41% up to 85%. So we doubled our language arts proficiency, if you will, but we also dropped the, cut score was dropped 25 points. If you look at the state, it went from... Can you see that, Brian?
Yeah, it went from, the state, it went from 39.4% to 80.5.
To 80.5. So it is interesting. We did improve, but the state also improved a lot. So don't know, I know the cut score drop, questions I have are, any of the questions, she seems like a major bump up. Because I know we work really hard with language arts, and we expected this to move up with the drop, but the state moved up that much as well. So these questions that we have, then we do a disaggregate, we break out the data, and we look at our females to the left. The proficiency is a little higher than the males, at 87% and 82%. And then we break out, the groups have to be greater than 10. It used to be 20, but now it's 10. So we have our Hispanic group, our Caucasian group. Our one group that is low, and this is a challenge in every school district, is students who are identified through an individual education plan. If they're juniors, then they identify at 7th grade reading. So the trick and the challenge for us in every school district is to get our students not only proficient in 7th and 8th grade and 9th grade, we have to get them up to 11th grade or, if you will, meeting the 10th grade standard. So we focus on it. We have two new supporters with us. We have with Ms. Simmons and Ms. Kohler. The idea of, and we'll give recommendations, what we're going to do with these students. But just to give context, it's not a lot of students. So if it's out of 28, it's about 2/3 of the 1/3. So it's like 18 and 9. So 18 students did not get to get to the score of 725. And then we have our non-IEP students, which are very high, and then our 504 students, which in most cases rank just as high. They get the accommodations, they get time. So that's a good thing, because sometimes kids just need more time. And I'll put in a little public service announcement of why we use math assessment. They do not get timed. These tests are timed and they're grade level. So the idea of giving kids more time gives kids an opportunity to score better on an assessment. Because with processing, just like when you're teaching, you give question wait time. It matters when you give the kids time. Some kids just need time for process. When we go to mathematics, if we look at two years ago, in the spring of 2022, we see Verona with 53% passing, and the state was at 40, it looks like 48, 49, thank you. Move the podium over. And then if we look at just this last spring, we jumped up 12 percentage points. And the state jumped up by percentage, what was that? 10%. So positive growth, again, the cut score dropped, but we are turning in the right direction. I wish they would break it out into like 1, 2, 3, 4, so you could see what kids were approaching versus what kids were... There were a couple of scores I looked, and it was a 650. I don't think they even tried. But then there are other kids who did, who scored like near 850. So we kind of have, you're going to get that sometimes when you look at it mathematically, you can trim that. What's the heart telling us? It'd be nice to have a 2, 3. It would give us a little better idea of students who are close. And then we do our data. This is exciting. We have our male and female percentages of proficiency are nearly identical. So the stereotype is generally, well, they get to high school, boys outperform girls, well, not in Verona. I think we've seen this. They're on equal footing. Spanish students have done very well for passing. Again, our students who have IEPs with math, it's hard. We're working on a math program where there is more flexibility in the idea of mindset and support. But again, it's algebra, geometry, and those are challenging subjects for many people. So with a new program that we have, and that we have curriculum for, the idea that we got from our students last year was that they liked the idea of exploring and learning with group work, as opposed to being told procedures and what to do. So ultimately, these should improve for all of our students, but especially for our students with IEPs. They need to understand that there's flexibility with numbers and that they are allowed to explore different options.
But Dr. Miller, this is really no different than NJSLA across all grade levels for veterans with disabilities.
Yes.
That's why we're working to change our programming.
Without a doubt. And then trying to increase our tier 2 and tier 3 interventions, which we are going, but it's not, and education is never fast enough. And then it's the waiting game. And then just achievements, I've said it, but our ELA scores of proficiency doubled, but the cut scores dropped from 750, 725, and math, they went up 12%. And again, the note is that they dropped. Area to focus, our students have IEPs. This is something that we're aware of, and I'll speak with Mrs. Kohler and Ms. Simmons about what to do. So we're working as a unit this year, all departments, on unpacking standards and understanding the different levels that are packed within our city standards are compounded. And so we may look at them on their face and think we should assess here, but as we unpack them, we realize that they're asking more. We think we try to do this, but when we unpack them, they become very... We've done some exercises now with some teachers and some administrators, and they're pretty eye-opening. So that will be a focus for the next few years. Utilize formal and informal assessments to inform small groups of sections, like more consistent feedback with formal assessments. That means like checking in more daily and finding from our kids what's working and what isn't. Increasing opportunities for inclusion. So we're starting to do that at our elementary, is to have inclusion in our classrooms. So I know, that's very good news. And again, we will see results from this over time, which is good. And then enhancing tier 2 and tier 3. We do have interventionists at our elementary, and we do have a math coach, but we're going to be creative in the future with our middle school schedule to try to get more tiered instruction. Because that's what we need. We need more than just a general question teacher. We need to identify and then put them in smaller groups, and if need be, even a smaller group with even more specialists. That's how we repair it, according to Marzano and others. It takes at least three years of good instruction to increase student achievement. It's not just one year. So that's all we have for this. I will be presenting NJSLI probably in a month. And then we'll have IEP like we normally do in around Thanksgiving. Any questions?
Just a few.
Sure.
Has ever, has there been a situation where a student just has not been able to go through all the field process and graduate, or had to go some other...
Not with us. When I started here, we had 100% of the kids passing. We're, that was the HESPA. Then we found out that the HESPA was a lower grade level test than what was...
Oh, was that 730?
Yeah, so yes, we have. And if we've ever had a situation, we create portfolios where we work with a math teacher, language arts teacher, we think in the standards, and they've all passed. Yes.
And then in the, particularly in the English test, there was the reading and the writing.
Yes.
Do they have to pass both portions to be considered pass?
It's...
Or can they, like, is it a...
It's compounded.
Okay, so someone could do really well in math and totally quite...
Yeah, it can. I would say...
You can pass all the math, or you can pass the math, but they're not...
In the English, there's a reading and a writing.
Yes.
Like someone could, like, you know, get all the points in the reading portion, but then it's probably not...
Well, no, what generally happens is if we have stronger readers, especially when they're exposed younger, their reading and writing is strong. When their writing is weaker, their reading tends to be weaker, tends to be a direct correlation.
And then, do we know how many students scored between 725 and 749?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
But we do have it.
We do have that.
Okay, yeah, so I'd be interested to see, like, if we kept the cut score the same.
Yeah, I can do that for the next second of the evening.
Thanks. And then for the IEP students who seem to be our weaker performers overall, do we know how many of those students were on the replacement versus the in-class support track?
No, but I can break that down as well.
That might be interesting. If we have kids that we can push into in-class support, that is what we're doing with...
Say no more. I've been advocating this for a while. When I started in observations last year in this caller, we saw students who were in resource who should have been in, and she just knows this. It should have been a more challenging environment, but from what we saw, it was predictable how they would score. So yes, we are addressing that. We try, because it's about challenging kids and meeting them where they are and increasing them, not just having that be their go-to person.
Or exposing them to grade level standards. If you want, when you pass a grade level test, they have to be exposed to the standards.
Without a doubt. So that is, that is a, it is a challenging task. It's not easy, but it can be done.
So I don't have any questions to the U.S., but I just want to publicly to share how excited I am and how grateful I am that we are going to see inclusion classes. I think, you know, you spoke a little bit to some of our juniors or 11th grade students, right? If they're living in that 8th and 11th grade standard level, right?
Yes.
That is where we're going to just publicly, that's where we're going to be able to reach these students and starting at the elementary level, while we all wish that we could have it in every classroom, right? The fact that we're starting right now is a tremendous step in the right direction.
Yes.
And I am incredibly grateful, and I think that our students are going to truly benefit, all of our students. So just want to publicly thank you and really say how grateful I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Have a good night.
Well, moving on, we have our superintendent's report. Excited to be here today.
So I will probably recount some of the things that Dr. Miller said, but I'll try to be specific with that. It's in a different context. So just reviewing what goes on over the summer, it's a really busy, busy time at Central Office. It is busier this year, and the time went faster. So I never experienced it. But it's all good. So you know, because of the agenda tonight, you're approving many curriculum documents that were written over the summer. So we get curriculum written. Obviously, we're taking orders of supplies of resources to support that curriculum and our programs. The cleaning and maintenance that happened this year, if you notice, are, when you walk through the high school, our floors look like that you could put on a set of ice skates and skate down the middle of the floor. That's true of a lot of work that was done this summer. And I do want to give some kudos to our maintenance studio staff and Mr. Bolgietteri, because our buildings are utilized over the summer. We have five of our six buildings in use, either with our ESY program, our splash program, our, the recreation program that we share, we use a provide services to the, I'm sorry, the township. And it's very, and our VC program. So we have programs taking up the majority of our schools. It's very difficult, and the time is short to get all this done, and they get it done, and it looks great this year. Not only did they get all of our stuff cleaned and painted and sparkling, ready to go, but we also had a major assistive basement to our schools where we pulled up carpeting, put down tile, new baseboard. And I also want to shout out to our technology staff, because you all do. Mr. Perdutti is part of that. A phenomenal job with the getting all of our Chromebooks updated and cleaned out and cleaned and ready to be handed out to the next group. It's a lot of work over the summer. Most important for what we do in the summer is staffing. I said this last year, my first address to the board, the board report. The most important thing we do as a Board of Education and as a superintendent and my administrators is to find quality teachers. There are really two pieces of research evidence that are always evident. Teacher in the classroom, principal of the building are the most significant movers of student achievement. So it's important that we make those great choices. And we are fully staffed in the teaching area for our tenure track positions, and I want to differentiate. We do have two positions that are lead replacement positions that we have not been able to staff. It's extremely difficult to staff a partial year. But we are, we are covering those with six periods. You will see there's some six periods on the agenda tonight that were added to the addendum. Oh, it's actually not an addendum anymore. If you notice, we put it on the same agenda under alignment, says these have been added since the, since the agenda was supposed to be public. So we are covering those with qualified staff. It's just that we put some pressure on our teachers to pick up that extra, those extra sections. So we will continue to look to cover those two, those two positions as we move into the school year. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that and give a break to the teachers that are teaching sixth. We are still in need of support staff, specifically paraprofessionals and substitute staff. All our substitute roster is much more robust than it's been in the past couple of years. It is getting stronger as are our paraprofessional ones. So kudos to Mrs. Simmons, who's been really advertising wherever she can and interviewing like crazy to get paraprofessional staff in, so we can reduce our reliance on agency staff, which is quite a lot more expensive than paying our own paraprofessionals. We also did some professional development this summer. Mrs. Simmons did Crisis Prevention Institute work or CPI work, which is a training for our principal, paraprofessionals, and other special services staff on de-escalation techniques and restraint training. So how, if we do have an aluper or a student that's well, right, we say is a low pay, someone who's, you know, trying to get out of a situation, our staff can safely either try to de-escalate their first or restrain them so that they can hurt themselves. So that, that happened, we did two trainings this summer. We did an instructional model, a teacher evaluation training for a group of teachers and administrators. It was a three-day training for administrators, a two-day training for our teachers. It was a phenomenal training. Our teachers did an survey by far. They were well. They were joined by our staff and found to be very, very positive. We are bringing back that same professional developer in October to do what we call side-by-side coaching. So because injury to reliability and how well our administrators understand the model to evaluate staff is very important, and you want to make sure that we're all on the same page of understanding. Mrs. Bryant, who does the training, will come in and we'll, as a small group, into a classroom, observe a teacher that has volunteered for that purpose. It's not for official evaluation, it's for practice. We observe, we go back to a classroom, and we rate together to see how close we can come to derivative life. We do that all day for two weeks across all six buildings. And she'll do that for two days in October, and she'll come back the wrong year. And so the teachers that are working with her as those performing teachers are also learning as well. We are also doing another day in October. This could be virtual. Just talking about updating our teacher evaluation system in 2024, but our principal evaluation system, which is also integrated, and there was a new one then too. So that doesn't take as much training, so I think we can do a virtual training on that, Mrs. Bryant, on that. I have my complication. I'm welcome back on Thursday. We are having a guest speaker. Her name's Jody Mahon. She is from a company called Together We Thrive. This is, she's going to be speaking to our teachers and our education staff on positive education through positive psychology. And in a nutshell, it is looking at, in general, as we, as we grow up in our own minds, we tend to focus on our limitations. What's wrong with us? It's very natural to do that. So this is a program that engages people to think differently and look at their positives versus their negatives. So it's in mindset activities that she's going to be doing, and she's going to come back in September and work with our teachers on how to translate that to our students to address mindset. It also, when we're talking about increasing rigor, which is what we'll be talking about over the next several years, you can't increase rigor until you change mindset, right? So this is all embedded in what we need to do to prepare our students for increased rigor in the classroom and what we need to do to prepare our teachers to provide that rigor for our students. So it's a balance between mental health and mindset and prepare students for rigorous activities. So she'll be here, and actually, Together We Thrive, we have not been exposed to her, but they also have a character education program that is something I'm going to look at. It's obviously not set stone, but I do want to take a look at it. We are also training early in the year foundations. We listen to our teachers on our ed council that told us that they wanted more trainings, and they deserve more trainings. So they'll, they'll get trained in foundations, which is the most... told us that they wanted more trainings and they deserve more trainings. So they'll, they'll get trained in, in foundations, which is the multi-sensory structured literacy program. Uh, really, it's, it's uh, right, reading, writing and, and some handwriting, but it's, it's the main core, it's phonics, it's, that's a piece of our program. Uh, we'll train teachers in kindergarten, first and second grade early in the year. And we will also, and I, I know Mr. Walker's gonna be happy to hear this, are also doing some formal training in how to, uh, create uh, professional learning communities. It's something that we have not done. Um, so, and, and the reason for that is because it's a good thing they have, but the other big piece that we're embarking on and what is what Dr. Miller was talking about is, um, one of the issues that we see is when you look at these tests, the G P A, the G, uh, the graduation proficiency assessment, the N J S L A. Those are standards based tests. So one of the activities that our teachers have never been asked to do or that have been ever provided in training in is looking at the standard and what is the complexity level of the standard. So if the standard is asking students to develop a model of something which is extremely high level and we're, we're teaching it at a level that's kind of recall, practice, and then the student sits down to an N J S L A and they're asked to answer a question in a much higher level than it was taught. But there's a disconnect between what we, what we'd say is the, the target, right? The learning target for the classroom and the task versus the standard. So we are, um, gonna teach our teachers how to use a taxonomy, which is kind of like loose taxonomy, you probably won't heard loose taxonomy of educational terminology. Loose taxonomy, it was made to create tests. So, um, Marzano and depth of knowledge, web of knowledge was, was created for instruction. So we're gonna be using, um, Marzann, that's the language we're using in our evaluation and instruction model. But we're going to teach teachers how to look at the standard, how to unpack that, because standards can be, you know, very, very short. Look at the attributes of a two dimensional shape. Or today, yesterday, we worked with principals when I had them unpack the standard that had four learning targets and for different learning targets at three different levels of complexity. So if you're not looking at standards in that depth with that eye of complexity, we may not be, um, so if, if there's, is there a teaching disconnect or is there a rigor disconnect? So our teachers are very dedicated. They're very good. So we're looking at it as a, really just a rigor disconnect. So we'll be doing that and that is gonna take some time with their grade levels. So P L Cs are gonna allow them to continue that work throughout the year. Um, good news. Um, we receive, and I'm not a big ratings person, so I don't love New Jersey Monthly. It's a, it's a movie target that, that metrics change. Well, they haven't done it since before COVID, but before that, the metrics changed every two years. It was really not a great indicator um, of, of, of success. And that coming from a school district that was number three on New Jersey Monthly, so we say that very clearly it's not a great indicator. But U S News is a little bit of a better indicator and that came out today and, um, Corona High School ranked, um, thirteen hundred and eighty-nine out of about twenty-five thousand schools, high schools across the country, which puts us in the forty percent top. Uh, we are the silver badge, which we can purchase to put on the front of our building.
Please do not purchase.
Uh, and we're also, we have, they also break it out to New Jersey. So we were ranked number sixty-seven out of about five hundred schools in New Jersey, which puts us in the top twenty percent. But I do wanna point out, um, uh, that there are twenty-seven schools that have, of us that are max, which really should not be included. They should break them out because they're application schools. And, you know, we, it's just, it's not a great, that's kind of not a great measure. So sports have begun, begun and Mrs. Palmer, as you brought, uh, a group of students once again to the leadership, leadership summit at West Essex. And in this, this year, they got to listen to a piece Washington, uh, who did motivational speaking for them and she said, Roger, it's a Williams basketball approach. Last but not least, and I know my, my report is small and tonight there's a lot going on, um, so we, we convened a set, oh, we talked briefly about this bits and pieces across the year. We convened a scheduling committee at H B W. Um, we established that committee to review the current schedule and house model in that building. Uh, the middle school schedule review focuses on developing a program that will increase the instructional time, English time regards and math for students in grades five and six just to match what the Department of Education recommends and we don't currently. Uh, especially because, especially in fifth grade, because fifth grade in most schools are, uh, school districts are still in the elementary world. So they get more than forty-five minutes of English, time regards or math again. So we're looking at how we can change the schedule to increase the amount of instructional time. And for grades seven and eight, how can we develop a program that will better provide better experience for our students to transition in that school? So those are the two focuses for, um, our, uh, our schedule. And we have a very, uh, comprehensive group of teachers and administrators on that committee. They've met twice over the summer and they'll continue to meet as the school year goes on. We'd like to have, um, something in, uh, something conclusive by the time we go into negotiations. So that we can, we can fill those two roads with concrete. Um, we are also interested in reducing the high cost of the house model on the district. So, um, it's just a very cursory look at the cost of the house model. We spend close to a little bit more, more than four hundred thousand dollars more on the teachers', uh, salaries for the fourth grades in H B W than we do on grades one through four of all four of our elementary schools, which is a significant amount of money. And, um, there are a lot of, there's benefits to the house model. I'm not saying there, there aren't. Um, but when we have needs that are not being met, that's problematic. So I, I, I wanted to be clear with, I said, uh, communication to the teachers earlier in the week that I'm not looking at a way to impose a reduction force. I'm looking at a way to reallocate our resources to learning them. Uh, we are not looking to reduce teachers. We're looking to better utilize staff. So as I've said prior, uh, publicly many times, we're a very short staff in the elementaries and to some extent at the high school and the electoraries, but right now focusing on the elementary grades in both general and special education. We have seven grade level sections at our elementary that are starting this year off at, at least twenty-four or more students uh, in a class. And post-COVID, it's difficult to make up those lost, um, anything, make up gains when you have twenty-five, twenty-six kids in class. The class sizes have impacted our community in that we have, uh, several families now that have students, um, that are not going to the neighborhood school because they're moving those classes. They're going to other schools. And we have two, two families that have actually split their children into two different schools because we couldn't accommodate, say, a fourth grade, but we could accommodate second grade. And so they may have a student in fourth grade at Brookdale with their own, uh, uh, house, household. So, um, that's never good. Uh, as Dr. Miller was talking about, um, tiers two and tier three, very quickly, um, many states have something called, uh, R T I or, um, why are you R T I so that in my head? Response interventions. New Jersey chose to adopt a program called multi-tier system of supports in which the first tier is what's happening in your general education classroom, in the, the main classroom. So what you could do to support students in your instruction. So what we're doing with the, with adopting an instructional model, providing professional development for our teachers, bettering our evaluation system, that's tier one intensiveness. What we don't have is we don't have a, a way to deliver quick tier two, other than our two literacy coaches that function across four schools. And I know Dr. Miller mentioned our math coach and, and that's wonderful to have, but she's not an interventionist. She has a whole, she works with teachers. Sometimes she pushes into classrooms, but that again would be a tier one support and a tier two support. And tier three support, we have, um, only for our students in, um, very small pockets across the district. And tier two would be pulling kids out, um, for, uh, in your individualized learning. Um, we don't have that across the district. However, current number of special education teachers, uh, should be result revised to serve the number of students that are classified in that district. This then is a result in medical grade levels at the elementary school. So if you have a student in grade two, three or four that need resource replacement, um, they generally are in a class with students of all three grade levels. Which is why when we look at our test scores, you have a fourth grader that's in a class that's being taught second and third grade. How often are they getting to those fourth grade standards? Um, and while, uh, inclusion, which is, uh, what I was talking about, the general educate, uh, general education teacher and special education teacher both dedicated to a group of mixed students, students with disabilities and students with disabilities, uh, which by the way, that's both groups of kids, uh, is very common in grades five through twelve here. It is non-existent in elementary world. So next year, we are starting a pilot, um, at, at, uh, in preschools. We chose those groups of kids that would best be able to schedule. So we have grade three at Forest and F N and grade four at Brookdale. Um, it's a pilot, but we need to do better and we can do better, but we need to create our funds in order to hire the staff to do that with. So, uh, as I said, one of the most significant places for funding and, and Mr. Cruz knows, I've been looking for funding all year everywhere. I picked up every rock. But I've moneyed, moneyed several times, always find, they did not find money. Find the money. Uh, so there's, we can, we can find the money, um, by looking at the house model. Find the staff to support what we need for the students out there. So tonight on the agenda, you'll see three items that I'm recommending to the board, which is our phase one starts to changing the house model and that's looking at whether or not we need two principals at H B W for six hundred and fifty students. And if, uh, listen, if we had everything we needed and that was working, we keep it, but we don't have everything we need. So, uh, starting effective August thirty-first, if the board makes the approvals that I'm requesting them to tonight, Mr. Galbachek will be the H B W principal, Mr. Lancaster will be the assistant principal. And while this doesn't, uh, and anyone that has eyes can see this is not a tremendous amount of money right now, but in the future, as we have people retire and, you know, we're all gonna retire at some point and we hire new staff, obviously hire assistant principalships at a lower, um, level than we hire full principal. So down the road, this will be a better cost savings for the district, but to start somewhere, um, that's where we're starting. So again, I do, I wanna note, this is not about performance. This is about trying to recapture, uh, some control over spending at H B W. So, uh, phase two, we'll be looking at our schedule and once we have a five, six program and a seven, eight program that best meets the needs of our students, we will present that to the board and to the staff and to the, the community. Uh, one of the benefits of the house model currently is that it allows for true teaming. We can develop a schedule that allows for teaming without house model. It's not all of this. So I, I, I'm not fearful that we're going to lose anything by doing this. I think we could wind up with a better teaming model. Um, by, and, and what you get out of it is you get classroom space. The other high cost of the house model is we have teachers on carts teaching three, four, five different rooms because there's not enough classroom space. This will alleviate some classroom space and provide for if you're, if you're teaching on a cart, that's, you're paying a cost to what you're able to do and it's unfair to our teachers. So I think this is, uh, you know, one of the first big changes I'm suggesting the board do and I, I, um, I think it's a way that we can aim to spend our limited resources to modernize our schedule, move programs forward, improve teaching and learning for our staff, I mean, for our students, um, and our staff, because they deserve that professional development and that feedback and, uh, improve our student outcomes. That's my very long reports for the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any question?
I actually have one question.
Okay.
Um, this is both back, way back to the beginning. Um, you mentioned, uh, I believe it was training for, um, teachers when it comes to, um, students with possible moments in anxiety. Do we currently have drills um, in the schools where they're, where they're practicing, you know, if there is in fact?
You know what? I don't think so, but I'm not gonna say for sure. Um, uh, Laney probably does because they have the highest population of students that would potentially have that opening um, potential.
Right.
Um, I have to be honest. Corona has a very low incidence of restraint. We only restrained two students this year, which is really low. Considering, not the one, considering the four elementary schools. So, uh, but I can, I can look into whether they do drills or not, Mr. President. Yeah.
Thank you. And move on to our business administrative report. Mr. Cruz? Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, so I'm actually gonna keep my report brief, uh, to, uh, to make up some time tonight, uh, as we, as we, uh, close out the summer. I know that, um, um, superintendent, these have, we just actually shared the craziness, uh, that has been going on at the backend, but I know that our students and staff are gonna actually reap the dividends that, uh, of all the efforts that were put into the summer. So, um, we're looking forward to that. Um, in finance, um, we do have, um, tonight, our June uh, board secretary, treasurers and transfer report. They're all in agreement. Um, as we close our fiscal year, I'm happy to report that, uh, we ended fiscally strong, um, in our fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, at the moment, uh, our auditors are, are in, in the building this week and they'll continue the audit on the week of October twenty-ninth. Uh, and the year fiscally strong actually prepares us to continue building up our reserves, our fund balance and, and also preparing for fiscal year twenty-five. So, no, it sounds far. Fiscal year twenty-five is two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, twenty-five school year, which is around the corner and our staff will start building that budget, uh, later in the late fall. And that pretty much concludes my report for tonight. So I appreciate it and it's a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Does anyone have any question? Next up, we're gonna go on to our student representative, Alicia Howard. Please.
Another short one for me. So this is just coming out of the summer, but, uh, school year starts up September fifth. Uh, more recently, freshman orientation was held August twenty-eighth from nine, eleven thirty. Incoming ninth graders were able to adjust to the building. They did some icebreakers and they got an introduction to the school. And, uh, as Miss CJ said, you mentioned, fall sports season, full strength, practices, scrimmage, games. And that's about it for the past two weeks.
Thank you so much, please. I hope you enjoyed your summer. Next, we're gonna go on to our committee reports. First up is athletics. Jermaine Tease's report.
Of course.
Otherwise, it was, it's, I'll keep it short too as well because, um, as we hear, fall sports are underway. It's crazy that the summer is almost to an end. Our press box have been secured and corrections are made so that is able to be used. Um, the speaker system, I believe, was up and running for Friday night's, um, home, home opener football game that we were looking for. Um, on the schedule is, uh, the Cheer for a Cure. The Corona High School cheerleading team, uh, presents Cheer for a Cure, which benefits Minnetes Angels. That will be, um, held on October eighteenth on the high school football field. Um, let's see. I think that was it. Mr. Walker, did I miss anything? I'm very short. Thank you. Education committee.
I got that. Um, our meeting was not so short. It's okay. Um, so just to kind of go down my notes, um, this year we have sixteen students who are receiving what was referred to as E L L services now is M L service for multi-language learners. Um, and yes, sixteen.
Sixteen, alright.
That are, that are receiving it. Now, I, as you've said in the past, that's just the students who are actually accepting the offer. There may be other students out there who just decide, their parents decide that to, um, enroll in the M L L program. So that's, um, on October fourth and March sixth, that is going to be the open T P A meeting for, uh, parents of students with, uh, I E Ps, battle for plans, special needs to come and, uh, speak with the director and the child board or the C T A board. Um, inclusive, uh, inclusive schools week is going to be in January. Um, more information will be coming out about that. For our preschool this year, we have two L S, L S S program, uh, classroom. For our preschool this year, we have two LSS program uh classrooms, one LLD and one integrated classroom. Um you know, we may at some point, we should need to uh see if we need to add to those uh classes. Not the issue, okay. In-class support is starting uh like uh Miss CJ definitely mentioned, uh grade three in Brookdale FN and grade four in Forest. Um the high school LLD program should be up and running. Uh they are still doing some work on the kitchen portion of the class, but I heard that uh Ms. Prisco was very helpful in getting all the necessary paperwork through and all the people. Um so that, that is well on its way. So they're going to be able to start with after fully working kitchen, but that is in the process. Um they are revisiting some of the home instruction uh procedures and policies to make sure that we are going to make the district doctor is signing off on everyone who has home instruction and that towns are certified all the hours given. Uh Care Plus has replaced Effective School Solutions as our provider of onsite therapeutic supports. All the students who are eligible and their families have been contacted to meet with their new Care Plus practitioner. Um what's really nice about Care Plus is kind of goes into the next uh part I have is they will do, two of their practitioners are able to do risk assessments. Um so if we have a student crisis and we need to make to determine if they are harmed to themselves or others, we can do that risk assessment with parental permission onsite instead of just send them to a facility and else, you know, yes, and clearances too. So I mean, that's nice. That's something that ESS did not provide. So it's a nice little added uh feature. Um so uh added district placements, they seem to be slightly up right now. We have thirty-two. I think last year we had twenty-nine. Um and then we have two shared time and four both tech. Um students, which is nice. And one of the both of the students just started a minute ago. It it was like crazy. So and then uh our academic enrichment or gifted program is going to be up and running. Um there's a lot of information on the gifted program that will be coming out. There's a guide. There's multiple ways that students can be um screened for access to the program. Um there's a parent recommendation, teacher recommendation. They look at standardized testing. There's appeals processes. It it's very comprehensive. So Miss um she spent a lot of time over the summer getting this all ready. Um so I think people are going to be very happy with with the rollout. And then her curriculum, uh there were fifty course, new courses this summer um that were written or modified so that he's a ton of that was that here. He, but he really um, he really got everything done. And then okay. The chance. I think that is professional development, foundations and there's some of these letters training, the sec- the year two of the first cohort. And then professional development, the first one is scheduled for today, scheduled for September twenty-second. And then strategic plan, finalizing the action plan of that.
I know, um we're going to be doing that.
And then that's
I think the enrichment. I think the enrichment program, um Miss CJ said we sent out excellent communication, I thought, um with the back to school website. Um there was a ton of information in there and in that document, if anyone in the public is interested and wanted more about the academic enrichment program, there was a link that explained some of the um program itself and um.
Yeah, we're using the NNA, the NNA.
The NNA, right, exactly.
Yeah.
Um benchmarks to, to see. There was a lot of information. So again, the public does want to learn more about that. They can find it in that webpage. Um and then the other thing was just the advanced placement. Uh of course, Dr. Miller um was, was happy to share that um in seventeen of the courses, our student averages increased, which is a, which is always a nice thing to see.
Thank you. Any more any questions? Uh facilities and facilities and operations. Mr. Walker, can you keep that?
Sure.
Thank you.
We had a good meeting. Um uh the director of facilities as as well as all the the employees uh that he works with uh really worked hard to do a fantastic job getting the place ready. Like even when you just walked in the building tonight, it's sparkling. You walk in always here. Um so you it's, it's a really good job. It's an important job for our kids. Our kids and our staff deserve the efforts they make. We've made for that. Um I'll just kind of paraphrase a couple of projects that are going on in each school, but there are a plethora of projects going on at each school. But high school, they're looking to upgrade the front sidewalk. They're hopeful to have that uh done before the school year. Pam mentioned the uh the press box repairs. We've got it approved for one full year. Uh and then hopefully it stays approved. Uh but if it needs to be done, they're going to look into that. Parking lots in all the schools have been repaid, not repaved, but repainted. Um HBW, uh we see that the other certain wood floors that were upgraded. Uh the cafeteria ceilings repaired and upgraded. Uh Lanning had the new floors in certain sections and the asbestos abatement. Um and the wooden floors were refished in FN. Uh they did a lot of work in the boiler repair and the hot water tank was repaired or replaced. Um and we're seeing some uh in the back of the school, there's concrete that removed uh replaced. Uh Brookdale, the front steps are looking to, the front steps are looking to be resurfaced and repaired. Um and the stairwells are also looking to be referred, repaired. And then at Forest, uh we're seeing that they're, they're working on redoing the wooden stage, refishing that uh and then doing some work with the tiles. So you know, uh the pictures that Henry showed our, our committee were, were very impressive. Um I'm hopeful that we're able to, to kind of use it as a brag sheet or information things to get that community to know, hey, uh this is a priority that your kids are in a safe place, a place that looks nice. Um so I think it's good for the culture of everything. So um I, I was really pleased with that particular meeting that we have. That's it.
Do you have any more questions? Next is our finance committee meetings.
So Mr. uh Cruz spoke too much of finance. Um the one thing that I am happy to report out is that we were awarded a little over five hundred thousand dollars uh for the emergency connectivity fund, which will allow us to purchase that sixteen hundred Chromebooks for the district. So good job, Walker. Uh and then one small um point, we, most of us and our students in HB in high school um received something for the insurance stay um for the Chromebooks. Um we have switched over from uh my school books to citizens, which brought us down from a four percent to a three point one percent transaction fee. So just saving a little bit of money anywhere we can. Um and I think that was a link.
I have some quick questions. Been raised about the insurance for the Chromebooks. Um a couple of people um have mentioned that they didn't realize that there was a two that they paid for two children and then any additional children that they didn't have to pay for. Is there someone they can, if they pay for more?
I know one parent is working with the Spalage.
Okay, so they should contact Mr. Spalage.
Uh one contacted me and I was just talking to him. He said, you're a shutdown person.
Okay, so but if anyone else had paid for multiple, if anyone was listening in.
There hasn't been that many that have paid. Um but we put out several communications this year about, because we put it out last year, just now you would saw it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and then um just to clarify, the money doesn't come to us. It goes to an insurance company?
Yeah, we're not making money on this.
Okay.
As I say, when you pay everyone more insurance and you don't have a claim for five years, you still pay that money every year.
So it's, it's, it's actually going to get filed directly to the insurance company.
Yeah.
And they'll just collect, you know, you don't make money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to open up the floor to public comments on agenda action items only. Seeing none, we will move forward onto discussion items. Um I just want to wish everyone a good year back on September fifth. Our administrators and all our students. I just hope it's a good year. I can't believe the um summer is over, but just wishing everyone a really good year. Does anyone have anything to mention?
When's our, is it, are we having the board retreat first, then the next meeting or the next meeting?
Board retreat, no, our next meeting is the twelfth of September.
Very good.
And then our board retreat will be on the sixteenth. So I'll report on that on the twelfth.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, I'm just wondering that. Hold on a second. We're going to go on to our resolutions. I need a motion, please, to approve routine matters, resolutions A one to A two. Moved by Mrs. Brizala, seconded by, sorry, Mrs. Ferrar. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you can call on.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
This is Brizala?
Yes.
This is Ferrar?
Yes.
This is Prisco?
Yes.
Uh for the record, Mrs. Fresh is absent. Uh, she passed.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to, because uh just want to put it out there for people that aren't looking at our agenda because it has changed. So um if you notice in personnel, there's a strike through.
Yeah.
That was advertised. Um that person has since uh withdrawn their candidacy. So instead of taking them off, we thought we could do it that way. And um I know you noticed that just so the public knows at the bottom of anything that was published last Friday night, if anything's been added, rather than doing it on a separate page, because if people don't know there's an agenda, they don't want to go to the agenda to see what's on it. At least it's all on the same page. It just says the items below in the section have been added to the agenda's original public posting. So anything below that is new versus putting it on a separate document. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would still vote yes.
Still vote yes, thank you, Mr. Walker. Moving on to our personnel resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolution B one to B twenty-five. Motion by Mrs. Ferrar, seconded by Mrs. Brizala. Any discussions?
I just have a quick question about the two point three with the uh extra transport OG. Is that like the poor, like I, I'm really happy to see it because we spent a lot of money to district training, a lot of our staff, uh teachers in Orangieonham. And to be able to like actually have that use it as a separate course is fabulous because I think it really benefit uh not so students, but honestly, our, our finances in the long run, if we can keep it in district who um have the slots here. But are those just like um?
Those are pullout replacement classes, yeah.
Okay.
Uh actually, I'm going to say they're probably, if they're supplemental, so they're pullout, but they're supplemental, so they're regular in each class.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you can, please call on.
Sure, Mr. Walker? Yes. This is Brizala?
Yes.
This is Ferrar?
Yes.
This is Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh is absent. Motion, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our education resolutions, I need a resolution to approve resolution C one to C ten. Moving by
A motion.
Mr. Walker, seconded by
One second.
Mrs. Brizala. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that several of them are only for one unit.
Yes.
So we will be approving additional units of the curriculum, hopefully in the next month or so.
Well, with the exception of biology, that was just a revision of one unit. We did. They weren't rewriting the whole curriculum. They were just rewriting the first unit, the launch unit for biology. And for academic uh enrichment, yes, that will, you'll be getting the remainder of the curriculum um soon. That one got started a little late. If we wanted Mrs. Zemra to finish her work at Runkers. Or she left it.
And then I just want the LLD program, the blood stove, is that just one unit that wasn't clear? Or is that the whole curriculum?
You know what? I, I'm gonna, I don't know. And I don't want to uh just take it to you. It'll be long and I'm not sure. Um I could certainly check. I mean, okay, yeah. I mean, if it was, if it is only one unit, we'll approve the rest of it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. If you can, please call on.
Sure, Mr. Walker? Yes. This is Brizala?
Yes.
This is Ferrar?
Yes.
This is Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh is absent. Motion, thank you.
Thank you. On to our athletics and co-curricular resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions D one to D three.
I just have a couple of questions to that. The, the first question is uh for the volunteer coaches. So once, you're presuming that they're going to get the board approved, which I'm sure they will. Uh what's the next step? How do they find out that they were approved and what paperwork they might need to do or fingerprints? How does that work?
If they need any fingerprinting, any kind of paperwork, um Laura will release people for them to Alice Sanchez, since she, who is our HR specialist. Um she'll communicate to uh coaches that they can approve and usually the coaches will chat with them. Uh Laura usually follows up with volunteers, but any, any paperwork that has to be taken care of will go through um Mrs. Sanchez.
Okay. And then the, the other one was, you know, it's just philosophically, but I don't like seeing employees, even if they volunteer, do it to me for free and not getting paid. So I also like to hold, be able to hold them accountable. Um just for, just for, but I still want to vote yes, but it's seems really amazingly kind that the one employee is looking to do the volunteer gymnastics. Uh and that's, that's great. Um but I, I
They're actually being paid.
Oh, they are.
They're being paid by the county.
Oh, perfect. So there's
No cost to the district. They are being paid.
I'm, I'm very, very happy to hear that. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Um I need a motion then to approve uh resolutions D one to D three.
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Brizala, seconded by
Second.
Mrs. Ferrar. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you please call on?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
This is Brizala?
Yes.
This is Ferrar?
Yes.
This is Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh is absent. Motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, you know, we can do next one. We can put the actual price, the actual cost of the stipend and then put it across to the district. So it's clear.
That's great too, but I was, I was really happy you guys had already planned to head it for that. So thank you.
Okay, um moving on, we do not have any uh resolutions for facilities. So we're going to go on to our finance resolutions. I need a motion, please, to approve finance resolution. No, okay, sorry, that's a finance resolution F one to F nine. I need a motion to approve resolution F one to F nine.
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brizala. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Cruz, if you please call on.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brizala?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Uh Mrs. Fresh is absent. Motion, thank you. By the way, this is such a smart or way to do this, having the identity items moved into this. This is very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
We should
And last is our governance and policy resolutions. I need a motion to approve resolution G one.
A motion by Mrs. Brizala, seconded by Mrs. Ferrar. Is there any discussion?
I just think this, as I said at the last meeting, but I'm really excited about this AI policy. And I think that this is something too that could completely unpack because we need
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's a really important thing. And even though it's not a standard, I think it's really important policy to say that we're going to be seeing as a district.
It is. Actually, and I just want to give a shout out to Peter Hughes and Presto, who helped me uh revise it. So the revisions you're seeing on, yeah. Yeah, I shared it with some of my colleagues and and he jumped on it and he is that because everyone was adopted too.
This sounds like a great topic for a workshop.
I'm in.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, can you please call on?
So Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brizala?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And for the record, Mrs. Fresh is absent. Motion, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, I'm going to open the floor to any public comments. Seeing none, we are going to move on and we are going to adjourn our meeting. So the next scheduled public meeting. Oh, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mrs. Ferrar, seconded by Mrs. Brizala. All voted.
Sure.
So our next public, public meeting will be held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, beginning of confidential session at six P M. Public session at seven P M in the Verona High School Learning Commons. It is now eight fifteen and our meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Frank. Have a good first day.